Hi, bringing the September, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three school board work session meeting to order. Ms. Hastings, can you take the role?
Sure. Mr. Cotton.
Here.
Mr. Crowder.
Here.
Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Mr. Weinberg.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Meeker.
Here.
I am here, and Ms. Walsh.
Here.
And absent tonight is Mr. Richards.
So we have a quorum. This is primarily a work session to discuss the middle school project. We do have, before we start that, a discussion on whether anyone would like to bring forward for the board's consideration rule resolutions for the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item two on the agenda, which is the location of the middle school. This is a work session for the board. We plan on having at least two public hearings in September. For members of the public who are watching, we hope this will provide some good information. But also, on the district's website, sau8.org, there is a section of, that is called "The Middle School Project," that has all of the documents to date on the project. And I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity tonight. And really, it's an op, it's a chance for you to hear the information that we have accrued to this date relative to the sites. The site over on South Street, which currently is the Runlet Middle School, as well as information relative to the Broken Ground. So I really think that I'm going to turn it over to Tina and to Holly. They have a PowerPoint for you. And then, I really want to have a discussion because ask questions, also think about this PowerPoint as it relates to the hearings that we're going to have. The public hearing scheduled for the end of September, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And so, this would be the kind of information that we also want to share with our, with our, with our public, with our stakeholders. And so, if you think that there's pieces of information we need to include, that's really important for us to hear that tonight. So, thanks for, oh, everybody being here. I think this is, kind of work is really helpful for us. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Tina and to Holly to lead us in this review of the PowerPoint.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. I want to go to the next slide. So we wanted to give you an update on what is happening right now. There is a lot of work going on. We have been contacting folks about the wetlands on the Broken Ground site. And we just found out today that it looks like there isn't any wetlands on that site at all. Did my mic just?
It's still working. Yeah, you're good.
So, that's good news. We've also submitted to Fish and Game to talk about endangered plants or animals on the site. And so, that is going to be a little bit of a longer process. They got back to us today with an email that kind of has five questions on it, so we're going to need to sort through that. It looks like there might be some endangered plant species on the site, but I think there's a process for working through that with them. So we'll be able to bring you back more information on that process. We're also actively looking at the water and sewer capacity for that site. So that information is forthcoming as well. It may be that it's difficult to get water pressure to that site, so we need to investigate that and make sure that there won't be any issues with that. And we're also, last but not least, getting a traffic engineer on board, and that's going to be someone who's going to look at both sites. So the Runlet site and also the Broken Ground site. So we're in the process of getting them going. So what we hope to do with this presentation is to think about what goals you all have for the new site for the middle school. We've been working with you for a while, and so we've, we've heard some of your goals, and we started taking a stab at the list that you see up in front of you now, which is also what we handed out to you. But we would love your input on that, and I'm sure you want to add to this. But if we come up with a comprehensive list of goals for the site, it'll be a way to help you figure out which site fits your needs better. So, think about these things as we're talking about the options for the two sites. So if you go to the next slide. And please stop us if you have any questions about what we're saying. So right now, you can see, these two areas are the South Street site, the existing Runlet School site, and the Broken Ground site. You can tell that they are, it's hard to read on here. The blue radius is the one-mile radius, and the orange radius is one and a half miles. And this is starting to talk about, you know, busing and walking to the site. But this is not really completely accurate diagram because, as we were talking to Jack earlier, it's not really as the crow flies, it's as you drive. So, we have been in conversations with the transportation folks. Terry Karati has been talking to us about busing. And she thinks from her analysis that if you moved folks to the Broken Ground site, it would add approximately two buses to what you have right now. And she sent us sort of a long email about her information on that, so I'm happy to forward that to you all, so you have that information. So-
That's if we stay with our current policy on busing. We could-
Correct.
-as a board decide that we wanted to bus additional students from certain locations-
Correct.
...based on traffic patterns.
Yes, that's a good point, Pam. Thank you. So if you go to the next slide. And this just zooms in a little bit more, so you can see the size of the Runlet Middle School site versus the size of the Broken Ground site in the two locations. And again, it, it's a little bit deceiving again, because I feel like it looks very populated down by Runlet, but if there's only two buses being added, it, it's a little bit more of a, an even distribution of students potentially across the two areas. So if you go to the next slide, please. And then, we've also, you know, dived in and done some investigation on both sites, so Holly's going to talk a little bit about what we've found in our evaluation.
So we've evaluated both sites. So the, the existing Runlet Middle School site, as you know, it's about a thirty-acre parcel that includes both Abbott Downing School and the existing Runlet Middle School. The middle school sits on the northern sort of twenty-two-acre parcel. And then, there's a road that sort of bisects the site through the center. We've got some wetlands on the east side of the site here, and then, the rest of the site is, is bordered by kind of a residential neighborhood. And the Abbott Downing School has some frontage on South Street. So, we're also looking at the traffic patterns on the existing site, and that's where, when we get the traffic engineer kind of onboard, they can provide some more sort of detailed analysis of this site. Let's see, go to the next slide. So, we're going to show you three options tonight for the Broken Ground site and two options for the Runlet site. We're going to start with the Runlet site. And just so you know, what we're going to show you tonight's really, they're just, you know, ideas. And, but we're showing you a similar-sized building footprint on both sites. A similar amount of parking and also the same number of athletic fields. So we're trying to compare apples to apples on both sites. So the first option for the South Street site locates the building kind of on the northwest corner of the site, which you don't have a lot of options for the building location on this site, because the existing school sits in the center of the site. So, there's really not enough room on the east side of the site to locate a building unless you want to go really vertical with the building. You could, you know, maybe consider a four-story school on the east side of the site, but the west side of the site has more real estate available for a new school.
Can you just do the streets? What street it's bordering on to the-
So this is, sorry, where the arrow is, is Spring Street. This is Springfield, sorry. Conant Drive along here, South Street here, and Cypress back here, if that helps.
It does. And you can see the existing building outline in red on top of the fields right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's the space between a new building and the existing building?
That's about forty-five feet. So it's pretty close.
And to the edge of the, to the property line with the neighbors?
Twenty-five feet to the property line on the west side of the site.
Good skinny.
Now, we could squeeze it over a little bit, so it's a little more equal there, but it's, it's pretty tight. And if you look, it's sixty feet, right, from the South Street to the front of the Abbott Downing School. Just to give you in your mind an idea of what that feels like in terms of space.
I think Jack and the superintendent may have drawn a line outside. You didn't do-
That's good.
I will go, I will go and walk that line. I know it was there, and it was washed away, but I will go back while you sit. Just hit the arrow.
The next time you drive by Abbott Downing, in, in your mind, think about, that's sixty feet, so.
Isn't it, is it demonstrated what the, is it, or maybe that's the outdoor classrooms for what construction time would look like, the mobile classrooms?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. There's, you know, there's going to need to be lay-down space during construction, right? So you can imagine that's either going to happen behind the new building on that field that we're showing, like the soccer field, or it could potentially happen in the front where we're showing new parking, but it's pretty tight.
And would the entire existing bu, building be able to remain during construction, or would we have to remove any part of it?
Right now, we're showing it remaining for construction, because that's the least expensive way to attack it, so you don't have to have modulars, you know, on the site.
So we are replicating the, the number of fields that are on the current middle school site, although some of the fields are going to have to overlap, so they wouldn't be able to be used simultaneously. So we're showing two soccer fields, lacrosse field, the practice football field, baseball and softball. And that's what you currently have on the middle school site. But, you know, four of those fields in this configuration actually have to overlap one another. It's a little tight. We, we have about two hundred parking spaces, so you are gaining some parking spaces. We know that parking is an issue on the Runlet site. We've heard that, you know, teachers, some of the teachers who travel between schools have a really hard time parking when they come back to the middle school.
Just a quick question. Time for construction comparatively between the two sites?
I, I think what we're trying to show is that you could do it in a single phase of construction for both. What will be more challenging here, thank you, sorry, we've been talking about potentially geothermal for this building. So what they would want to do is install that underneath a field. So, on this site, you'd probably put it underneath that soccer field that's behind the building. So it's really kind of tight. And you'll see with, you know, Broken Ground, you have a lot more options for that. You know, you could potentially start that, you know, way ahead of time, and you could have a bigger well-field at Broken Ground. So this site might lead you a little bit more to a hybrid kind of option for your solar and, and geothermal. But, you know, we may go that way anyway once we start those investigations, but it is tighter here.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm remembering a conversation somewhere along the line that the access road that cuts through the middle will have to be removed?
It doesn't have to be removed. We are showing another option where we take it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we've heard a lot of, you know, talk about safety and having that road bisecting the site. There's a lot of pedestrians that cross it to get to the fields, when they're getting out of the cars and buses. So we are having an option that takes that away.
Okay.
And again, I, we would like the traffic engineer to take a look at that and see if what we're proposing actually will, will work. We don't want to make traffic worse in any way. But that's Holly's next option that she's going to show you.
And this is a three-story building, right?
Yes, this is a three-story building. Yeah.
Tina, Bob asked about a timeline, and you said, like, it would be a Phase One project. What do you mean by that in terms of actual time?
Right. So, on this site, it'll actually be multiple phases. So to clarify, they would build the new building where we're showing it, and then, in a second phase of construction, they would take down the existing Runlet School, and they would create the fields. So, you're right, there would be two phases of construction. Versus, on the Broken Ground site, where you don't have an existing building that you're taking down, they could just build everything simultaneously.
And so, would the first phase be until twenty twenty-eight with when it opens?
It would be about thirty months of construction for the new building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, how many months for, to take down the other one?
You know, my guess is that they would be able to take it down in about six months, because they have to do abatement and demo. And then, depending on where that puts you in the time of year, they may have to come back to do the field work, you know, if it ends up in December or something like that. So essentially, that could take a little bit longer.
Okay.
And none of the existing building is used, like the gym or any of those? All of it goes away?
That would be up to you all, but we're showing it all going away right now, so that you can recreate the fields in that location.
So, right on the heels of that question, there was talk at one point to sell that building. Is there any talk of that still, or, I mean, I know it gives us an additional field, but is it too crowded a site to have two different entities? There's our school, of course.
Right. I mean, we talked about that early on in terms of what would be the use, the current use, you know. Of course, we're always interested in being able to put property back on the tax rolls, right? So that is an option that you have. I mean, that's something that you will discuss, as you would discuss any of the properties that, that the school district owns. So that is, that's an option, and certainly, a, a building that may have some saleability, if you will.
But in terms of adding another use to that se, I think the question was, if we kept on that site, would we, and I guess that's a question for the board, would we sell the building and have a second or third use on the site? I have a hard time saying that.
That's too much on the site.
Can't, can't imagine even being able to have enough parking.
Yeah.
Right.
Remember, too, that the high school does use these fields, right?
Right. I think, you know, that's something else that we've thought about, too. There, there really is very little room in this scheme for expansion in the future, right, unless you were to lose fields in the future. So I think you are limited to expanding the school in this location.
Would this design allow for us to revisit a five-through-eight school? Were we to need to do that because of universal pre-K possibly coming, or?
Yeah, you could just add on another pod of, of classrooms, and like Holly said, you would, you would lose a field.
Right. Or alternatively, you could consider going up a story. The building could be designed, you know, for a future story, but that would be very disruptive in the future to have to build an additional story.
Holly, does this, does this schem, schematic up here show a field on the Abbott Downing site?
It does, right. To, to replicate all the fields that are currently on the Runlet site, you do have to take part of that Abbott Downing sort of green space behind the building.
There's a lot of space back there. I mean, that, that doesn't seem like a big deal. I mean, they might not like it, but, you know. Krista McAuliffe doesn't have fields half that size, so.
Shall we go on to the next option?
Press the right one. This is Jack's.
The down. Yeah, page down, maybe. So the second option that we've looked at on the Runlet site is eliminating that, that road that currently bisects the site. This does, you know, open up sort of the whole center of the site, give you a little more green space to work with. So all of the fields now are located sort of in the center of the site. Some of the fields still do overlap, the football practice and lacrosse, and potentially the baseball field would all have to overlap. This does allow a little more room for some outdoor learning spaces to the north of the building, although, you know, this is sort of a limited area, yeah. But I think that, you know, relocating the road does open up some more possibilities on the site. It would mean relocating the parking for Abbott Downing to the north of the building. But we think that this is a possibility that we'd like to explore with the traffic engineer.
Yeah, that makes sense.
What is the parking space differential from both?
So I think there are currently a hundred and ten spaces for Abbott Downing and like a hundred and thirty for the middle school.
And, and does it stay the same between option one and option two?
We're showing the same amount of, of parking for both options. So we're showing two hundred parking spaces, which we think will satisfy the needs of the school on a daily basis. And if there is a large auditorium in the building, you would have to share some of the Abbott Downing parking for those large events. So instead of building three hundred parking spaces, which is what you need for a nine-hundred-seat auditorium, we'll use a hundred of those Abbott Downing spaces for events, share that parking. Any questions? No?
Am I correct in seeing that the overlap in this option is significantly less than the last, but there is still some existing overlap?
There is still some overlap, yes.
Between what looks like a lacrosse field and a baseball field?
Yeah, and, and the football practice field, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's definitely less.
It is less, yeah. And, and, you know, there might be other configurations that we haven't explored yet, but, you know, this is sort of the real estate that we have to work with in this option.
But this is a nice option. I mean, it does create more of a campus between the two schools. Definitely more pedestrian-friendly.
Okay, yeah. Move on. So the Broken Ground site, so, the Millbrook and Broken Ground site is about thirty-five, thirty-six acres with an additional fifty-nine-acre parcel to the north, to the northwest of the Millbrook-Broken Ground site. That site is, has some walking trails on it that are shown in green. So, this is also situated, has sort of a residential buffer on two sides. And there's a pretty good, it's a little bit hard to read here, but there is a, a pretty decent sidewalk network in this neighborhood, which is shown in, in red. An area of concern is sort of circled there, there's a white circle. Thank you. That's a four-way intersection that we've heard is problematic, so we've been considering that as we've been looking at options for this site. We know that the Millbrook and Broken Ground schools are currently accessed off South Curtisville Road, so traffic comes up South Curtisville Road, enters the site, and then exits on Portsmouth Street.
I have a question. So this is where my kiddos go to school?
Yep.
And I find that, at present, the intersection in question is very busy during drop-off and pickup time, that's certain. I think, I speak for lots of parents who do drop-off, as I do, witnessing multiple accidents right in front of the school, where there hasn't been an opportunity for the city or district to mitigate parents creating like a third lane of traffic. And so, there's been multiple fender benders. Nobody's going very fast, but there's still a lot of accidents. And I'm always getting an email from the principal saying, hey, if everybody could allocate, like, just a little bit more time to get your kids to school, that would be great. But we all know, that's not necessarily realistic. So I wonder if, are we planning on traffic entry to come through that same area? And if that's the case, how are we going to mitigate what is already a significant issue with traffic and accidents happening? Because I don't think human behavior is going to change between now and then, if we're being realistic.
Can I, wouldn't, wouldn't the timing of the school day mitigate that? Elementary school starts at seven forty-five and ends at two thirty, and middle school is eight-thirty to three. So, three-thirty. So, elementary school, those kids get all dropped off, and then those buses go pick up the middle school students, and then come back. So, what happens now is you'll have two hours of traffic instead of one in, in those neighborhoods, but they won't all be there together?
That's fair. But I mean, then there's like two hours-
Correct.
-of potential accident times.
All the hell that comes at two-thirty, and now they all go away.
Exactly.
And then the buses come back, and that all happens again at three-thirty.
So I wonder if there's plan, I know that we are still in the process of bringing on a traffic engineer, and I know that that's going to be something that folks are, I, I know that we're going to need to look at, because it is such an issue. But I wonder if it could be explored, that there might be an alternative route into the middle school area? So I just wanted to ask about that. I know my constituents have been letting me know about that.
Because it's more than double the students in the middle school as well. Broken Ground and Millbrook is collectively-
They're almost as big as-
Six hundred.
Yeah.
Six hundred. You're right. So Runlet's nine hundred to a thousand, so.
Yeah.
So it's-
Eight hundred at Runlet and six hundred plus in Millbrook and Broken Ground.
I didn't realize they were that close.
Yeah. Yeah. Two big, two big campuses. So, can you respond?
Yeah, sure. So, so we have, so, you know, the first task, the traffic engineer is gonna, he's going to come out and observe both sites, the Runlet site and the Broken Ground site, and start with some observations and suggestions about both sites. We do have some preliminary thoughts about access to this site, and we're looking at bringing in most people on Portsmouth Street. So, most of the traffic would come in on Portsmouth Street. We're trying to limit bringing in anyone on South Curtisville. We might have some buses and some of the options, access on South Curtisville. But, parent pickup, drop-off, access to parking would all be from Portsmouth Street.
Would that be for all schools, or just the new middle school?
Just for the new school.
Okay.
Jack, could you just point at where Portsmouth Street is?
Portsmouth Street is a red line, kind of on the bottom of the-
Let me just see if I can break out of this for one second, see if I can make this a little-
Look at you.
Oh, wow. I, I'm working with a PDF, so it's a little harder, but, see if that helps.
That does.
While we're looking at-
So there's Portsmouth all the way down to the intersection of Curtisville and Portsmouth, so right along here.
And the, the, the blue lines indicate the current traffic patterns at Millbrook and Broken Ground. So traffic is entering on South Curtisville and exiting on Portsmouth Street.
Where the residential edges show on here, on the previous sites, we had a twenty-five-foot buffer. What, and that's to the back of homes. So, do we know what the buffer is here?
The setback is shown, if you zoom in a little bit closer, Jack, you'll see there's a dashed line that shows what is the, the zoning setback. But when we start to look at options, we've dimensioned how far the building and access road are from the property line. So as we look at the three options that we're going to look at, I can tell- So as we look at the three options that we're going to look at, I can tell you.
You'll be able to tell us that, okay.
And I think the point of this, too, is that on Runlet, there's really one spot where we can put the building. That's kind of it. We could design the roadways a little bit differently. But on this site, because it's so big, you really have multiple locations. So none of these are going to be perfect right now, but it's just to show you that there's more options here than what you have at the South Street site.
Option one?
Yeah, let's do it.
I'll try to come out of this and zoom in for you. Well, I'll let you start and then I'll.
Okay. So the first option, we looked at locating the building along Portsmouth Street, and the building's actually set back from Portsmouth Street about 200 feet here. So the scale is a little bit deceptive. We've kept a green buffer along Portsmouth Street. There's sort of an opening there that would align with the center, with the entrance of the school. So the school would have some presence from Portsmouth Street, but still there'll be a very substantial green buffer in this option.
And that leaves, how much of the rest of the property does that leave?
Yeah, so if you look to the right, there's sort of a key that shows the entire site. So, you know, more than half of that 59-acre parcel in this option remains sort of untouched. And the only thing that you're putting in that 59-acre parcel are a few athletic fields in this option.
And again, that's to create the same number of fields that you have right now at the middle school.
Right.
Which are used by the high school, too. So you may choose not to develop as many fields here, or you may choose to do more. That's really up to you all.
I think it's important to reiterate what built here can sit on Runlet.
Exactly. We wanted to show.
See the actual comparison, that makes sense.
That's good.
It's the same-sized building, it's the same number of parking spaces, and the same number of athletic fields, with the exception of the football practice field, but that could overlap on this site, too. So this really kind of creates a green kind of core. The two buildings do have some separation, I think they're about 160 feet apart. We could also develop a nice green buffer, so each school has its own identity here. We have buses coming in on South Curtisville in this option and exiting on Portsmouth Street, but the rest of the traffic and parking are accessed from Portsmouth Street. There's ample room for kind of outdoor learning spaces here to the north of the building. And this option also provides a nice opportunity to share some of the parking with Broken Ground and Millbrook if you did have events at the school.
The 160 park, oh, there's the other.
160 is the distance between the new middle school and Broken Ground.
I'm just going to pop out of this for a second, do a zoom in so that they can see that a little bit better.
I think we've also, we have some very nice buffers to the adjacent property. The road that runs along, the access road that runs along the northwest side of the site there is set back about 35 feet from the property line. You know, and the building is probably about 100 feet from the property line on the west side here. We also, there's a nice green buffer kind of in that southeast corner.
Would the staging for this kind of option have similar issues as the existing Runlet site in terms of like disruption to the existing school, like noise and where the vehicles would come in and set up? Like, would that be similar to the issue at Runlet? Because they are, I mean, 160 feet is definitely a lot more than 45, but I was just curious about that.
In this option, it is pretty close to the Broken Ground school. Some of the other options that we're going to show you are set further back. So, yeah, there's going to be pros and cons for each of these. We're not really at the point where I think you need to choose an option, it's just us illustrating what's the potential of this site.
And in this option, if you could just zoom out again a little bit? Yeah, sure. Are those, where the new athletic fields are in the top left, is that already cleared land, or are there trees there currently?
There's trees. So this option only clears enough to create the soccer field and the baseball field that are up there. That is where a lot of the trails kind of converge together between those two fields. But again, it's not putting a building there, so people could still find their way to the trails. You know, there could be signage right off the edge of those fields that say, you know, trail this way, trail that way.
Thank you.
There is a really nice opportunity at this site to really introduce, you know, a joy of being in nature to middle school kids, you know, teaching them how to use this trail network. They're at a great age to be outdoors and really, you know, exploring and enjoying it.
Yeah. I will say the advantage for Broken Ground and Millbrook kiddos is that they're in the woods all the time for their PE classes. When I'm out walking the dogs on my break, I'll run into classes on the trail. So teachers are already incorporating that as a part of their learning opportunities. I will speak to the green space being a huge advantage.
And the geothermal and solar opportunities on the site compared to the Runlet site?
Right, so you would be able to have a larger well field here, potentially. You could go full geothermal. You would also have an area potentially to put in a solar field if, you know, you wanted to be net positive for the building, potentially. So that there is more opportunity here.
I know that when Oyster River just built their new middle school, part of what they did as far as a solar field is concerned is where they parked their buses. They had an overhang, or just they had solar so that you didn't have to plow out your buses at the same time. Is that something that we've been considering as an option as part of this development?
Yeah, you could definitely put covered parking in and put solar over your parking spaces, so along the front there of the building, potentially.
Remember, our buses are over and public.
But I mean, yeah, for sure, but parking spaces can be, can double as a space for solar, for sure.
Yes.
I want to go on to option two.
Yeah. So the second option locates the building sort of north of Millbrook and Broken Ground and allows you to develop fields along Portsmouth Street. You still have a nice green buffer along Portsmouth Street. This option, I think, limits the impacts on the walking trails, right? Because all of the walking trails essentially remain intact in this option, and the parking has been located so it could, people could use the parking on the weekends to access the trail network.
And how are the buses coming in and out again?
Excuse me?
Buses and parents.
Yep. So in this option, we have buses coming in on Portsmouth Street and exiting on South Curtisville. Parent pickup, drop-off comes in on Portsmouth Street and exits back onto Portsmouth Street. So again, all of the parent pickup, drop-off is routed onto Portsmouth Street.
How far is that setback to, the length of that stretch? From the beginning of Portsmouth to the parking, sorry?
Oh, goodness. That's a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. And from the property line, that access road is 35 feet from that western property line, and that parking area is, I think, about 50 feet from the property line.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So was consideration given to have buses have some sort of turnaround and then exit back out on Portsmouth rather than going through the neighborhood on Curtisville?
That is also a possibility. And again, that's where we want to engage the traffic engineer, and there's plenty of room to do that on this site, so that's definitely a possibility. You're just, you know, developing a little bit more of a paved road within your site, but.
Might make our neighbors a little happier.
Will the traffic engineer look at the existing traffic patterns at Millbrook and Broken Ground and make suggestions on whether there are improvements?
That would be nice.
Yes, they will be looking at the existing traffic patterns.
Great, thank you.
On both sites.
You know, Pam, from another point of view, over at Broken Ground and Millbrook, we have issues with parking. You know, often when I'm over there, I park down in the maintenance area because there are no parking spaces if I'm going into Millbrook. And at Broken Ground, there are a few at the far end, I mean, you could park at the far end of Broken Ground and walk over to Millbrook. That doesn't hurt anybody, but for convenience sake, parking is an issue specifically at Millbrook.
So there's an opportunity to expand parking with this project, too, if it was, you know, this site was chosen.
That is something I would caution when planning. It seems as though parking didn't receive the attention it probably should have in all of the elementary schools 10 years ago.
No kidding.
That have created all kinds of problems, and it'd be great to make sure that we're looking at the actual numbers of cars and people that need to be there and being sure that there's adequate parking for those people.
But I understand for this exercise, you were trying to do the same as we could do as a maximum on the current Runlet site, so that's.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I mean, we are looking at providing substantially more parking than you have at the existing Runlet school, so I think we're, you know, adding an additional 50 spots over what you have on Runlet, so this is an increase.
Yeah, sometimes some of the challenges is when you acquire more, you know, spent teachers and more services for students over the years, that, you know, you need more parking, you need to expand. So in this site, you do have space to expand, which is a plus. You know, Runlet, again, when we looked at, is a little bit more challenging, but this has expansion potential. It also has expansion potential for, you know, pre-K. If you go to the full-day pre-K and you need to have another, you know, building, that could be part of the planning of the site at this phase, so that, you know, we don't just develop this in a vacuum, we kind of look at the bigger picture, you know, 10 years down the road, or whenever that is.
I'm so sorry I didn't ask this when we were looking at the previous options, but I'm curious about playground structures and playground spaces still being incorporated. We're spending a lot of time talking about athletic fields, but I don't want to lose sort of our personal visual of where kiddos are going to be playing for recess. Would you mind sort of explaining where those things are going to go, if you don't mind?
Sure, I mean, you know, we're showing outdoor classroom space. We can also put in playground space if that's something that, you know, you all want to see for the middle school folks.
No, I'm, just specifically speaking towards like Millbrook and Broken Ground. If we're using existing space to build athletic fields, are we sacrificing playground space? I'm sure that's not the case, but I think it would be valuable to have that visual so we can see that those, how those spaces might be impacted as well.
Right.
That's a good point. We should put those on the diagram as existing.
You can see one of the existing play areas is sort of north of the soccer fields between the two fields are sort of like a brown, brownish oval. That is one of the play areas.
For public hearings.
For the existing Broken Ground and Millbrook School.
The document, that would be great.
Yeah, that would be super helpful.
But I think there's plenty of room on this site. In some cases, you might want to relocate some of those existing play spaces, but I think this site offers many possibilities to relocate those play areas. And even expand them if there's need to expand them.
Well, if we end up having to add fifth grade at some point, fifth graders certainly still benefit from recess and play structures.
I mean, adults do, too.
Well, I know, but I know. I think, I think all four, I think Runlet should have playground stuff.
Yeah, at least like outdoor space to be present, and I understand that outdoor classrooms can do that, for sure, but outdoor options for, I mean, if we're going to provide an exceptional education, I know that we've done a lot of thinking around this and have already done a lot of the legwork, but just saying, everybody benefits from casual outdoor space that is unstructured.
Absolutely.
So we have one more option to share with you? Should we move on to the third option?
Yes, please, thank you.
So the third option moves the school sort of deeper back into the site, which has, you know, some positives and some negatives. You know, you will have some increase in infrastructure cost by moving the building further into the site, because, you know, you have to travel a little bit further with your utilities, but it does offer some, you know, additional opportunities to make these indoor-outdoor connections maybe a little more impactful than they would be further at the front of the site. So in this option, I think we have buses coming in on Portsmouth Street. Sorry, no, I'm sorry, buses come in, I can't see the arrows myself here. Buses come in on South Curtisville and exit on Portsmouth, and then parent pickup and drop-off again come in and out on Portsmouth Street. The athletic fields are new athletic fields to the north of the building. So you are eating into a little more of the sort of the trail network in this option. But this also does offer the opportunity to access those fields from the north of the site, so there's a potential to get another access road and some additional parking in from South Curtisville Road to the north.
Let me see where that is on that meeting sheet.
I think what this option does is it does allow the two schools to develop really unique identities. It creates more of a green buffer space between the two schools. So I think they're more of, you know, two separate schools rather than sort of two schools that are in part of the same campus. It also maintains the green buffer along Portsmouth Street. So, you know, you sort of do lose sort of, this sort of identity from Portsmouth Street of the school, but, you know, you maintain that green buffer. And again, I think there are buffers all the way around. We've got a 35-foot buffer to that road on the west side of the site. The building is, I think, about 200 feet from the closest property line, 260. So I think that, you know, sort of less impact to the abutters. You know, the other thing with this is the trail network picks up right outside of the school, so classes can kind of come straight outside and access that trail network. So it's sort of very accessible for students and faculty.
This one probably has the least amount of impact on the Millbrook and Broken Ground School, too. I mean, this is like a separate building site for the most part.
Right.
The contractor would have an easier time building this, they'd have more lay-down space, you know, they're kind of tucked away from the kids on the other side of the site.
You also wouldn't be impacting any of the play areas adjacent to Millbrook and Broken Ground, so those would remain as-is, and the existing fields remain. The parking here, again, could offer access to those fields on the weekend. And there's plenty of room for kind of outdoor learning spaces adjacent to the building.
And of the 55 acres?
59.
59, how much of the, would that take up?
I think it's a little less than half, so if you zoom out, there's kind of a key plan on the right side here. So that's the whole 59-acre parcel, the orange, that orange line. So I think it's a little less than half of the site you'd be impacting.
And this is the one that develops the most of that parcel.
Right. So I think with the other options, you know, you're developing far less than half of that 59 acres.
Is there a significant price difference in the three options?
It's a great question.
And there it is.
Some of the costs at this site will be related to utilities, like Holly was saying, how far in you have to bring them. If there's a need for, you know, a water pump, potentially if the pressure's not good enough, that will really in some cost, and then clearing the land, of course.
And in terms of the price difference between rebuilding at Runlet and the most expensive of these options, are they comparable, is there a difference?
Yeah, it's a great question. I don't know that off the top of my head. We could, we could get some information on cost if we, you know, if we wanted to. We'd have to engage our cost estimator to do that.
Mr. Cretta?
So, feels like I'm being negative, but I apologize in advance. I like the idea of having the buildings, you know, more secluded and the advantages of having them further and further. What I worry about is vandalism, and so I wonder, what do architects and builders automatically put into buildings to keep that from happening? And I'm thinking of an occasion where some of our youngsters jumped onto a smaller roof, onto a larger roof at one of our schools at one point. Tell me what you think about that and lighting and.
Sure. Yeah, there's lots of opportunities. You can have security cameras all over the parking areas, you can have them out in the fields, you can have them on the exterior of the building. You can have lighting that's set up so that, kind of like you have at your house, if someone drives into the site, the lights come up, you know, they can be put on dimmer so that you're not keeping them on all the time. I think those are, you're probably your two, you know, best defenses. We will certainly design the exterior so that you can't climb onto low roofs. We will certainly design the exterior so that you can't climb onto low roofs and get into any hatches or anything like that. And yeah, and you can always, you can put some fencing around the schools, but on a site this big, if you're gonna, you know, develop the fields like this, you probably wouldn't fence the whole perimeter. But you could have, you know, access gates at roadways potentially if you wanted to limit how much traffic was coming in there at certain hours.
Thank you.
In terms of what's the timeline for choosing an option on one of the sites after we've chosen a site?
You know, I think what we need to do first, this is what we started with, is sort of think about our goals for the site, right? That will help you ultimately make a decision on which of these two locations are the best. And then after that, shortly after that, we'll work towards a single option on the site. So I don't think you need to choose any options tonight. I think you're still thinking big picture about which site is going to be the best for the new middle school.
A quick question on, as a former teacher that uses those trails, or has used those trails in the past. Couple of areas that we always would go to is the Beaver Pond, and that has been included in the study? And there would be no effect on the Beaver Pond, is what you're understanding?
The whole parcel is included in the study with fishing, fishing game, right? To find out if there's any endangered species or any plants of concern on that area.
So only endangered species, not perhaps species that are living there currently?
Like beavers?
Like beavers. And they're really cute.
Is there a beaver relocation program put in place?
And the deer and, and there's tons of animals out there.
Sure. I mean, I don't think that the construction project would be adversely affecting all of the animals there because we're pretty much keeping it to a very small corner of the site. So it's, it's not like you're clear cutting the whole piece of property. But we would work closely with the state departments to make sure that we're not, you know, harming anybody that's out there.
And then there's some historical, I believe there's some historical parts to the trails out there.
Like the Batchelder Mill stuff?
Yeah.
I feel like that's significantly.
But we wouldn't be disturbing anything on the way to those or in.
It might be helpful to go back to the first slide where we look at the Broken Ground site because just to be clear, we're not impacting the conservation area that is to the west of the site that's owned by the school district.
That's what I wanted to make sure that we were.
You can see there on the left side, there's still a substantial conservation land that's to the west of the site. We're only looking at that fifty-nine acre parcel that's owned by the district. So there would be no impact on that conservation land that's adjacent. And that trail network, you know, would remain intact and accessible through the Broken Ground site.
And the Beaver Pond is in the conservation land or is it on the?
Um, it's, no, it's actually up South Curtisville more.
Right, I think it's actually to the right of our parcel.
Yeah, maybe right on the core, right in that area.
There's a dirt road. They're developing homes out there right now.
Right now, do they?
Yeah.
They are, yeah.
So, but I think.
Or beaver might be gone anyway.
Other than, yeah, being disturbed by, you know, human interaction.
But there are South Curtisville Road trails that we're not even seeing on here that you need to continue. Past the, I think you can see where the utilities are out to the far right. You continue out that way, there's still an additional trail network that I think connects to the larger body of water that you're thinking of.
Okay.
All right. This might be a question Jack might know the answer to better, but if we chose to rebuild at Runlet and dispose of this land, do we know how it's zoned?
If I remember from the discussion with the city, because we attended the, they have every Thursday, they have engineering meetings, all the various. Similar to this development, you could put this development on that property.
Thank you.
Something similar.
So from a conservation standpoint.
Right, we're actually doing them a favor.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I have another question. If the Broken Ground site is chosen and we are left with a remediated, like open patch of land, would that sort of negate our need to build new fields if we could maintain fields at what is presently the Runlet site? Could we sort of get away with not building new fields if we know we've got thirty acres that are going to be empty? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. So there's a division between the high school use and the middle school use. And from what we understand, the middle school kids still need some fields for their middle school sports. You know, you might, maybe might not rebuild the practice field for football if that isn't one of their sports, but you would still want to create some fields here.
Okay.
Are you talking about the Broken Ground site or the Runlet site?
I'm talking, like, if we build a middle school on the Broken Ground site.
Oh.
And then we take down the old Runlet on the Runlet site, we're, we're left with an open site.
Yeah, and then it would be a question for the board about whether we.
Could afford, that's an expensive field.
Whether we would take it down or sell the building or.
I mean.
Or transport. I, I'm thinking of transportation.
Yeah, from one site to another. No, that's a good point.
Yeah, I think about those fields so far away.
That's like another step on a divi- our decision tree.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's endless numbers of decisions to be made with us.
Just reminding you that we're dealing with adolescents and middle school and, you know, like Mr. Crotto just said, you keep them close to you.
That's true.
And so I, I hear what you're saying is this cost saving measure, but we would want to have our eyes right within the knot on buses and traveling every day.
We would have to bus the high school students though, this, some of them.
There's, the high schools have used the Broken Ground fields. I can remember lacrosse coming over in the spring to practice and.
Yeah, they're pretty much over at Runlet now.
Are they?
Yeah.
Maybe there'll be Runlet, the new Memorial Field.
Oh, honey.
Oh, my God, one major project at a time.
But, but, you know, don't, don't dismiss that.
Memorial.
One of the, one of the thoughts around that field, and I don't want to get into that project, we will hear more about that later. But lacrosse was one of the areas that they were talking about and how they can reconfigure Memorial Field to address, because there's incredible interest in lacrosse across the boards.
If they redesign the track, they could have a lacrosse field and a football field.
That's right.
If they had eighty meter straights and a hundred and twenty curves.
They could span that area so they could put it in.
They could have an Olympic style track. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I love it.
Do you want to, can you go back to where we were?
Yep.
And then advance one slide.
Oops.
So.
Did I go?
Go back up here.
Ooh, ooh, right there, one more, right, okay.
Okay, so we thought that it might be useful to have a matrix where you can see these options kind of together and understand the impact on the green space at the Broken Ground site and how that, how these options impact kind of the overall site. But I think, you know, more importantly, there are many opportunities at Broken Ground. We're a little more limited on the South Street site with where the building can be located, which is why we're only showing two options here. But, you know, the, the goal tonight really was to, to help develop this matrix. So if you go, advance one slide.
And it's a three-story building at both sites.
It's a three-story building at both sites, correct, right. Same size building on both sites. So, you know, we took a stab at developing this, this kind of list of criteria for selecting a site, and we wanted your input tonight on this list. You know, we're not sure we've captured, you know, all of your goals, but we think that, you know, these are some of the, the goals that we've heard in previous meetings.
Just a quick question, I'm not sure if this was you, Kathleen, did you put this together or did?
We worked with our, us, HMFAH and our communications.
So for the pros and the cons, I was curious why underneath the Broken Ground site, the approximately forty-three percent.
I was gonna ask the same question.
And why it's a con that, on the existing Runlet site, that more people live on that.
Yeah, why is that a con? Yeah.
I was gonna ask the exact same question.
So I'll let that get passed out and I'll explain how we came up with that.
That would be great, thank you.
I guess it's a forty percent as a pro.
Well.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a con.
It's not an exact, exact science, but we tried, what we did is we took where the fifth graders attend elementary school now and totaled up those fifth graders, and then totaled up the ones that are on the other side that go to Broken Ground and Millbrook. And that's how we came up with the percentages. So if you look at the bottom, it says it's based on students attending ADS, BMS, and CMS, okay? Now Beaver Meadow is a little tricky because they could be coming from Mountain Road. So again, it's not an exact science, but if you take everybody, technically it's on the side of the river, right? Because we didn't cross over through the falls. So that totaled one hundred and fifty-four fifth graders. Then when you take Broken Ground and Millbrook and put it together, it's a hundred and sixteen. That's two hundred and seventy.
So I, I'm not arguing with those.
No, no.
It's more so about what is the reason that that's a con on the.
Would it be busing?
That fifty-seven percent of families live on that site. And I'm just curious why one is a pro.
Yeah, like one's a con, the forty-seven percent is a pro.
I think it's a transportation thing, if somebody understands.
Sure, sure.
Transportation, yeah.
Because right now you're accessing more of those kids.
Yeah.
Because of the density.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
You know, I think one thing we should add, I would add to our location discussions is operational costs and whether, you know, it's buses, whether we would need to have an option for more than two buses based on, you know, crossing Loudon Road. You know, where that radius goes. There might be areas that are technically in our.
Walking distance.
Walking distance that we do not want students walking and we should, you know, err on the side of keeping, yeah, right, limiting those impacts.
And we did talk about that because we knew that just the bridge area and the walking distance, that would affect youngsters. And we knew that we certainly didn't want them doing that and it would.
Yeah, have to go over a highway.
I also think.
I don't want to do that in terms of safety.
I also think we should think about it in terms of impact on the neighborhood that if a lot of the students who don't get, have a bus get dropped off, they don't walk. We know that from Runlet now with the few, you know, the limited number of students who are walking. And so we should consider that in terms of how we, you know, but we should also consider the cost of that in our pro/con columns.
And a couple of us, so Kara and I and Jack as well, walked to the one and a half mile perimeter, the theoretical perimeter that kiddos might be walking. But now that we acknowledge that it's by the drive and not as the crow flies, that might change the pathway. But I do under- correct me if I'm wrong, that East Side Drive is actually owned by the state of New Hampshire and not by the city. So if we are expecting kiddos to be walking on East Side Drive, that means collaboration with the DOT to make those sidewalks ADA accessible, put in new crosswalks. So I feel like that's a cost that we need to be addressing. And if we don't want kiddos walking over the highway for many reasons, does that also mean that we decide to change our policy as a board to accommodate transportation from any communities or any neighborhoods that are on the opposite side of three ninety-three? So I just want to be sure that we're keeping those things in mind as we're having this conversation.
It is East Side Drive owned by the state? Are there sidewalks?
Yeah, it's Route one thirty-two.
Are there sidewalks on?
There are.
On one, sometimes.
There's on one side.
And they're not consistent. You come up from like East Concord and there's a sidewalk, but then stops at Portsmouth Street.
Well, because the state won't, will not install sidewalks as a general rule, and they do not maintain sidewalks.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So that would have to be discussed.
Yeah, that little piece of sidewalk downtown by Friendly's that a lot of the Friendly Kitchen people, that never gets plowed or any, like it's.
There was a huge issue.
Because it's state. It's, so that's a huge, safe walks to school, not matter to the DOT, that's a city thing.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Look at you.
I'm gonna drop myself right on our, one of those side drives.
Oh, this is super helpful, thank you.
I think it may look nauseous, but.
Yeah, this is where we crossed altogether and we moved to the left to walk up towards three ninety-three.
Right.
So like right around the fifty-five and older community, the, the sidewalks are perfectly fine. It's when you get closer to the overpass that we notice that there's a real issue, especially like just trimming vegetation so that you can walk without having to duck your head. I know that's real nitpicky, but it is part of how we get kids to school safely as a easy point. I think, yeah, actually when you cross here, you notice that the sidewalk, it's significantly narrower.
Yeah, yeah.
And like that means a conversation with the state and, you know, like Pam just said, as a point of order, they're not going to do that for us. So that's really limiting in our ability to create safe walking space. Because walkability is one of our things that we've addressed as a value, so.
I do think the city maintains those sidewalks now.
Okay.
So, but yes, it's a conversation with the city and the state, yeah.
I'm gonna check on that.
Yeah, and I highly, if folks have the ability to do so, just taking that walk is really helpful to understand what our expectation is presently.
Don't jump off the bridge.
Not going across there. So he's ready to talk to him now.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a point.
And then if we are gonna widen those faces over three ninety-three, if we're gonna consider having kids walk there, then we're altering an overpass, which the state's just not gonna do, I mean, if we're being realistic.
And that intersection with Hazen also gets a little crazy.
Oh, it gets.
Oh, that's mental, yeah.
Yeah, it was a little nerve wracking for sure as we were standing there. It was pouring rain when we did it too, so.
Yeah, but that's good. Kids have to walk to school that way.
Yeah, it's true. And there's, I mean, there's a lot of neighborhoods right there where kiddos are very savvy as far as these neighborhoods are concerned. This is where they live. It's where they're spending their summer. This is their city. So I, I'm not questioning their ability to navigate to school. They already do it as far as a lot of the Broken Ground kiddos are concerned. But our due diligence, it requires a bunch of changes.
And in comparison, the South Street site, the existing Runlet site, that one is, would check the box better for the walkability?
Yeah, at present, the way it's set up, yes.
So as part of this exercise, we were gonna kind of go through our list of site goals and sort of say, this one checks the box, this one maybe doesn't, or it doesn't now, but we could, you know, with money, make it check that box.
Exactly. And I like Pam's suggestion of checking in on how many kiddos are actually walking versus driving. I think that's a good metric for us to have anyway, but that's, that's some inquiry that we really need to do.
I mean, I think it's our policy, right? So it's state law that we have to provide in least that distance, but nothing prevents us from.
Expanding it.
From expanding it.
Correct.
I think we should look at those options as we.
Yeah, we could change our policy as a board to accommodate anything we want as far as kids are concerned and getting them to school safely.
We, you know, we do make those decisions on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't bring them all to you, but I can think over the course of time, if it's a road that's isolated, right? Not a lot of ho- homes on it, it's just maybe wooded with just a few homes on it. You know, you often don't want youngsters walking down that street to a bus stop at the end of the road, that kind of thing. And we make decisions about whether that's safe or not and send the bus in. And, you know, they should be walking out to that stop, but we're doing that a lot.
Yeah.
We have, always have calls from families that have particular issues. Sometimes it's around medical issues and we make changes to that one and a half or two mile based on a family's needs, so. I don't.
No, but I think we're talking about it more dramatic.
Yeah, this is a, this would be a very big shift as opposed to the smaller accommodations.
Just know that we do make those accommodations for families and youngsters.
Yeah. Because I wouldn't want kids walking across three ninety-three or on East Side Drive. It's a major commuter road.
Yeah.
And I also, and I also think bus, you know, if we can get people to go back to using the buses post-COVID, that, that would reduce, reduce traffic.
Well, you know, I suppose we're our own worst enemies because we ask parents to help us during.
Well, that's what I mean, yes, yeah.
I'm still doing it.
Now we need to tell them to stop.
Yeah.
Now I have to tell them to stop doing that, I don't know how.
Although my friends who drive their middle schoolers say, you know, it's often the only time they get any information out of their middle schoolers. So they value that time.
It's one of the few times the youngsters in the car, they have nowhere to go, they have to listen. So I suppose parents, and especially if they're on their way to work, you know, it's, it's become the heart of their, is their family dynamic.
Yeah. Another thing that I'm, I know we're going to be talking about, but I want to bring to the table because I've heard it out in the wild, is folks are concerned about duration of time on the bus for either site. So if we could address. So if we could address what rides look like for kiddos, I think that would be helpful. And at least the community understanding what kind of changes, um, we're thinking of making.
Anyone else have anything that they want added to this worksheet?
Can I call in about midnight? Because that's when I usually have these.
I, I think this is, I think this is a living document and that we cannot, we can continue to add our criteria.
Is this something that we're expected to like just check off right now here together?
We didn't ask you to do that because we wanted you to think about all of the information you got.
All right.
But it's a tool to say, these are the essential things that we need to continue to think about as we, we try to decide between these two sites. Um, you know, somebody will say, is there another site? Well, you know that there's been a thorough, um, review of available sites, both Jack and Matt did that and have. And we continue to do that. I mean, if something comes up, we take, we do take a look at it. Um, but, um, I, I think we've, we've somewhat narrowed it down here to, um, to these two sites, so.
I would, I would have one addition as well, since we are looking at Broken Ground, it's just protect natural spaces as much as we can.
I like that one, yeah.
Like obviously there are certain situations.
Right, but it does.
But it doesn't mean that we.
I don't protect natural spaces at Runlet because they're on any. I mean, I'm not trying to steal my. No, that makes sense. The Beavers might have to be moved.
I was thinking about too, that, um, you know, having a school be a central part of a community structure is something that attracts me to the current Runlet site, you know, the kids can go down the street to the store or head over to Rollins. You know, it's, it feels like the kids are part of the community and where I see like especially option three just feels so far away that, you know, people don't even really see what's going on at the middle school day to day. So I don't know if it's really like a check one or the other because Runlet obviously gives that, um, option in a way that, that, I mean, this huge green space, the space is incredible, but it does feel far away.
That was a big issue in Exeter years ago, they built a new high school probably fif- ten years ago now, I don't know how many years. But Exeter High School was downtown Exeter, kids could walk everywhere.
Probably about fifteen.
And, um, beautiful, you know, beautiful building, athletic fields, everything all right there. And then the new school is across route, it, uh, what goes to the beach?
One oh one.
One oh one, way out, and it's, it's all by itself. It's gorgeous and huge and beautiful. And the first few years, the transition was really rough because the kids were used to going to the sub shop for lunch and having all that freedom. And now they were sort of stuck there now, it's a phenomenal place. So it's not the same, but it's a similar situation.
And I would add that Runlet is very much part of its current neighborhood.
Yes.
You know, we have a whole other set of neighborhoods on the other side of the river, you know, that it could be part of.
Right.
As well. And, you know, we don't let them leave campus during the day.
Yeah, that's true. We are talking about a middle school versus a high school.
Yeah, but the idea was that it was very local, it was right in the middle of everything and now it's in the middle of nowhere, which is what she was.
But I don't.
Everybody saw it.
Yeah, but I don't think this, I mean.
It's a really good thing to think about.
It depends on how we cite it, but even if we cite it further back, it's still not in the middle of nowhere. It's next to two of our existing schools and existing neighborhoods.
But there is no, you can't walk to Keach Park from there.
Yeah.
Like those, anything, anywhere you went, well, I mean, you have the woods and all the trails, but, no, it's just two very different realities, I think. I, I get, I'm undecided sometimes, I.
I wonder if we could ask Mr. Richard to come up and share his thoughts. I know he recently was part of a new building of a middle school.
That's great, you were. Well, I'm pretty sure I invoked during the conversation.
Uh, just to introduce myself, Jay Rashad, the middle school principal. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have experienced this, have friends who have experienced similar situations. You mentioned Cooperative Middle School that was built fifteen years ago or so and also Exeter High School. So I guess, what's your question?
So what school were you involved with?
Uh, so, uh, Oyster River Middle School.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, we started that visioning back in twenty fourteen and we moved in, uh, February of twenty-one.
And it's beautiful.
It is beautiful, yeah.
Gorgeous school.
Yeah.
And that was co-located with an existing.
Yes, so, uh, what we did was we were in the old ORMS, I call. Uh, it's funny, similar construction, that building was built in nineteen fifty-five. So when I walked the halls of Runlet, uh, it's very, you know, it's fascinating actually, all the fixtures, all the construction materials are all from the same time period. So we were in the old facility, stayed there as they constructed the new facility. And then as soon as the new facility was ready, uh, we actually moved in after February break. In, um, so we, it was in the winter, we moved over and then they demolished the old building. And that's where we built our field, which we used, you know, we did a field turf, so.
How disruptive was the building and teaching at the same time?
It was complicated, it was definitely disruptive. Um, I mean, someone asked a really good question tonight in regards to, which is very important, are we gonna lose part of the current building? So for example, we lost, we didn't anticipate losing our gym, but I was fortunate enough or lucky enough to have to inform our PE staff that we were gonna lose our gym, so we had to, you know, use different sites, uh, for PE class. But, you know, everything's doable, I will say, you know, the kids are very positive. But, you know, it was definitely challenging with field space for, you know, quite, quite some time and, you know, these are two separate projects, you know, I'll give you an example, like I, you know, I took to come over, uh, to visit a little early Superintendent Murphy. You know, I noticed the high school football team's practicing there, the soccer team and things like that. That's not something we had to deal with, you know, in Oyster River.
And can you remind, I was there with Superintendent during construction, but what was your buffer between the old building and the new construction?
It was close. So our recess area was probably about the size of this parking lot right out here, literally. So we had it fenced off and it was, it was very limited. But, you know, one of the project like that, you know, again, there's light at the end of the tunnel, but it was, it was challenging. But, you know, if you know me and, you know, I always focus on having a positive mindset and, you know, the kids were good. But, you know, it's definitely challenging.
And your school, as I recall from visiting, is set back quite a bit too, isn't it?
Uh, setback.
The new, uh, Oyster River School is set, was set back.
It definitely was set back because when you have a very tight site like, you know, Runlet does, in, in any site, you know, traffic studies and engineers, they do a much, you know, things, the world's different and that's a good thing. So things, there's a lot more, uh, safety codes in terms of roads and sidewalks and ADA compliance. So we definitely were set back and, you know, that made a difference. And the field was actually in front of the building. So when I actually looked out my former office or walked out the front door, the field was right there.
Mr. Cotton? Oh, no, Mr. Cotton.
Can we go back to the criteria?
Okay.
One second, sorry. When we, when you look at the criteria, is there anything that you would add based on your previous experience? And obviously, that's a different time period they're evaluating, but.
Yeah, I, I didn't look at it that way.
And I know that's putting you on the spot.
Oh, that's all right. I mean, I, I think of just about, you have some here, just the sustainability aspects of a new facility with the geothermal, the solar, uh, encouraging parents and staff to have, you know, electric vehicles down the road. You know, athletic fields are important, Superintendent already mentioned about, you know, you want your adolescents on site, so. You know, you want to feel like a field, something that's flexible and also a thing I would also add, just like community opportunities for things where the whole community can use the facility on weekends, whether, or the gym, whether it's pickleball courts inside the gym or things like that. So having opportunities for the whole community to have access to the building.
Mr. Cotton?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you had. Mr. Cotto?
So Jonathan just put you on the spot, I'm gonna follow suit a little bit. If there's one, if there's one piece of advice you could give this board, given your experience? So finish the sentence of whatever you do, make sure you.
Do it right. No, no, I know, but when I, when I say that, when you look at a facility, you know, you need to really think of the kids' needs. You also need to be forward thinking too, not just about what the kids' needs are right now, but down the road. And, uh, having gone through that process from twenty fourteen until when we moved into the new building, what I share with my staff is when we collaborate on the, on the project, meaning all of us and my staff and the community, what we want to be thinking about is not just what we want for our kids right now, but what we want is when we're all gone, and we will be, um, you know, forty years down the road, we want the residents of Concord and our capital to come back and say, you know something? The people who worked together forty years ago to plan this facility, wow, they were forward thinking and did it right. Because we've all seen projects, whether it's our own houses, when we think, jeez, I wish I kinda had done something a little bit different in this bathroom. Or once those studs are in and the frame's up, it's too late. So it's just being very, very thoughtful about that, everybody. And, you know, that was a big push I had with my staff. You know, I said, when the people come back, we want to, the Library Media Center, for example, I would speak with my school librarian, let's just not think about the needs right now for our kids right now in the moment, let's think about down the road. So when you're going to retire, the next person that comes into your role says, wow, that person whoever designed this Library Media Center was very thoughtful and forward thinking. So it's not gonna be perfect, but I think that's the mindset we want to have.
Good advice. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Ashard.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, thanks.
It's great to be here.
Thanks for being on.
Welcome.
Welcome to Concord.
Yes.
Um, one other thing, I feel like I've been talking a lot, which is not usual for me in meetings, but, um, I've been thinking a lot about the ways in which kiddos experience their twelve years with us. If we do it all right, then it's twelve years with us. Um, and how presently eight of those twelve years for our East Side kiddos are spent transitioning to the West Side of town. Um, and I've also spoken to Westsiders who say the only reason they come to the East Side is to use Target um, or to just access a big box store, they come in the back way and then they leave. And so one of the things that I'm considering in this decision-making is how can we utilize these spaces to knit our city together in a way that welcomes more community members to the East Side, to see how wonderful our neighborhoods are, to understand that we are a larger whole city? And can we offer kiddos an opportunity to come be on the East Side for four of those twelve years? Um, it's some, you know, it's not the final decision maker for me.
Six, seven, eight, three.
Oh, well, regardless.
She's adding fifth grade apparently.
Yeah.
We're not adding fifth grade.
Look at that, it's only three years, so it's not so much of a sink. Semantics aside.
Yeah, 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 no.
Can, can this be an opportunity to be a uniting opportunity for our city as opposed to being continually separated by a river and a highway?
I'm gonna add to that in a supportive way in that we also, when you look at the demographics of our city, um, a lot of the folks that live on the East Side of the river have little ability to get to the West Side of town other than a school bus on the way to Runlet or Concord High.
Yeah, thank you for adding that.
Um, so I'm, in a foundation I'm creating, very, very involved in the arts community. And, you know, I think of all these programs I'd like to sponsor and really what I need to do is buy a big bus and call it the Molly Mobile and go get all these kids and bring them to RB Productions and bring them to all these. I'm thinking mostly the arts right now, there's, the Concord Parks and Rec up there has been such a great change. That was in White's Park forever. And when we did the elementary schools, that whole business worked up there, amazing rec, you know, that was a good move. And at the time, there were people that were like, no, the city's down here. Well, no, the city's everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, and the part of me that really prefers the, the East Side for the building is to do just that, to bring all the longtime West Side of the River, downtown Concord people up there to see the neighborhoods and the schools and the kids. And there's a big beautiful theater that can actually house a lot of people to watch a play there in walking distance. Because a lot of the kids that live around there could walk or just, families on the weekends could walk to Runlet Middle School if it were up there.
Yeah.
To see a play or, or be involved in something like that. So that part of it, it appeals to me because I think, I'm not trying to be, you know, narrow minded, but I think a lot of families here have easier access to go someplace on the weekend than a lot of families there.
Agreed.
So I, that, equity wise, it would make sense to put it up there. So that goes in my head a lot.
Yeah.
You know, buildings and sizes and athletic fields aside, who are we talking about? You know?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else have any? I think there was a last slide.
Yeah, I'll bring that up.
That had the public hearing information and I was just gonna ask, I, I understand why we put Runlet as the location, but Runlet is, does, does not allow live streaming of the meeting?
No, what we have to do is we have to record it and then play it.
Yeah, and the space in there is not great for hearing people? So I, I don't know, I, I would, I just phrase it as whether we think that's the best space for the meeting. And if everyone's asked that, well, we'll go back.
Well, we, we, obviously we could set up, um.
What about the high school, can we meet at the high school?
That's what I was thinking.
Check in with the use of the high school on the, on that day, the twenty-fifth. The second doesn't matter.
Yeah, right.
It's a Zoom meeting. Um, I can check on the high school. If you, you, to follow up your thought about going to the East Side, we could have it out at Millbrook or Broken Ground. So we could set there, those, we have the budget sessions out at Millbrook, at Millbrook every year, so if you wanna do that.
I'll buy our lonesome, our, every year.
Because we might actually get people.
Please come and visit us next year.
We did, one person.
We did, but I can do that, so if you, you know, whatever your pleasure is.
Uh, you, my slight preference would be for the high school only because then it could be broadcast live, but I don't know, others have a different feeling.
Just to, just to play devil's advocate, there is an advantage to allowing the community to come to one of those sites and really take it in.
So it should need to be at Runlet or Millbrook, I would agree, because.
Yeah, that, there is, I mean, that's an advantage to having it at one of the sites is giving the community an opportunity to walk into it, you know?
Well, we have had it, we have had several meetings at Runlet. I, I don't disagree with Pam, but the media center there isn't as nice. You could go to the, um.
Oh, sorry, again.
The, uh, auxiliary gym.
The sound is just really hard to.
Yeah, it's, it's still a big, you know, like Concord High School, you know, a lot. I like Millbrook only because it seems to be a little bit more intimate, it's not quite so big.
And it can be live streamed?
Cannot.
Yeah, we, yeah, Millbrook, they'll take care of us.
No, Millbrook cannot be live streamed.
So neither of those sites can be, so the main reason is not live streaming it then.
So we have to just record it like, like the budget, like you do with.
And we'll have the Zoom option on the twenty-sixth as well, so it won't be, at least the second will be fully accessible, well, more accessible.
So Millbrook, is that, or where do people, what's more so?
I like it because we, we've been talking about Portsmouth Ave and South Curtisville and the intersection and all of the things that are irritants for some, and I think people, it'd be nice if they drove out there and actually saw it.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good call.
If it's, if it's available, I would, I would support that.
Sure. Same.
Okay. Let me see.
Let me at five thirty.
Tell me where to show up.
Five thirty at, at Millbrook, is that what you're suggesting?
Five thirty at Millbrook.
Five thirty at Millbrook, okay. Thank you.
And thank you.
And.
One more thing, please, we go to the next.
Turn it off.
Put the sign on, uh, question, if people have questions, this is something to call.
Oh, no, 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 I can do that.
One, one of the things too is, you know, this is being, obviously this is live tonight, that if people have questions, that they con- uh, contact us through ConcordInfo@SAUA.org and then we can collect those questions and bring them to you. So if, if anybody has any thoughts or want to share there and weren't able to be with us tonight, this would be a great way to communicate it. You know, we're all, we can always be reached at the SAU office and you all have public numbers too, so, you know, you're all available to the public to answer questions and.
I'm surprised Jack didn't put that up like he does during the budget.
I, I did mention it, but then they were worried about you getting an email and you not getting it. We could at least harness it because it goes to everybody and then send it out to you.
And while there's a new site that's coming online at the end of August, the existing site is available.
Right on our webpage is an existing site with all the. Right on our webpage is an existing site with all the data from the day that we began with the, with the focus groups that they had back in 2017, um, and we continue to add to that on any meetings that we've had, but we're also going to have a site dedicated to this portion, um, on, that will be all around the site, and the evaluation of the site, and all the data, so, because you can get lost in all.
Yes, there's a lot of information there.
Now, it's just so much information, this will target site selection.
Okay.
Okay, and, because will you click on the middle school project site again?
Comes here.
And then the middle school project update on the right-hand side, will you click on that? So that's going to update people through April of 2022, so I just want to make sure that, that, like, we, we have more information to give, and without context, somebody looking at the site for the first time may be confused, so I'm stoked to hear that we've got a new site coming.
But we should make sure we get this information, this presentation.
Right.
On that site.
And then the same goes for on the right-hand side of the column, we still have the letter of intent for the, um, church property.
Sure.
Which I think can also be very confusing to some, because just without context that that didn't move forward, that people are like, oh my God, are we still buying the, are we still buying the list? You know, so while all the information is there, without it being in its proper place, I think it could be confusing.
I want to check that, because there should be more on there, you know, we just switched over to a new platform after G, and I want to make sure that that latest information is up there, because if, that doesn't, that doesn't.
Blacklight you down.
I will check that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And as folks are leaving, I think Mr. Dunn drew a line that shows 25 feet from this three-story building, that would give you an idea of how close the new school would be to Springfield Street, which.
To the backyards, and the back, the homes of.
I have a line and a weed that shows it.
A line and a weed?
Yeah, a weed from the fence, and a line from the wall, so it could be 25 from either side.
Thank you.
Everybody walk the line.
Yeah, we have, I have a request that we need a non-public.
Okay.
Yay.
Do you have something?
I actually do, to go back to the first one, for the school.
Oh.
Resolution, I do have a resolution to make.
Oh, okay.
But, do we want to do that before or after?
Well, I think we should do it now.
All right, well, I have a resolution, it's regarding to universal free lunch for submitting to the New Hampshire School Board Association. Brenda, I'll make sure to hand this over to you after, so you don't have to transcribe all of it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Whereas the Concord School Board recognizes the importance of nutrition for supporting the development and learning potential of New Hampshire students, whereas the Concord School Board believes it is critical to tackle childhood hunger and food insecurity, therefore we submit a resolution to the New Hampshire School Board Association to advocate to the New Hampshire State Legislature to create a universal and completely subsidized meal program for New Hampshire public school students.
How similar is that to the resolution we supported last year?
I have no idea.
But it's the same general concept, yeah.
We have somebody taking minutes through this meeting tonight.
Oh, good, yeah.
So Sarah's doing that, if I could have.
Give that, yeah, yeah.
She doesn't have to worry about it, I'll have her take that.
Is there a second to Mr. Weinberg's motion?
Any friendly amendments?
Any further discussion?
Who's seconded it, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cotton. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Jonathan, appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, um, I will take a motion to move into non-public session.
Will you do that, could we ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we need to give, do you need to give the architects any more direction? Because between now and the 25th, do you need another one of these meetings? Did you like what you heard? Because this is what's going to be repeated at the public meeting, on top of what you commented tonight, but we want to make sure we get all this information out, but is there anything that maybe you need to think about and let us know, so we can pass it on, but.
I was just going to say, it was a great presentation, and it was very clear, and thank you.
Yeah.
And also, the timeline that was provided the last time we met, I think would be super helpful for citizens on the town, so we can combine those two, just because building aid is such a.
Sticky wicket.
Sticky wicket, and so it's really, I know, I've told a couple of people, oh, 2028, since the last time we talked about timeline, and they were like, you gotta be kidding me, so, you know, just putting it all in context, I think is really helpful.
I think there is, hopefully, we will have some information from the traffic engineer to share in advance of that meeting. So I think that, you know, we'd like to find a way to communicate that information.
Does it make sense to have you come, I don't know when the Capitol facilities meeting in, in September, to have it, actually, wait, I have it. It is the 6th.
You know, in preparation for tonight, obviously, Jack and I met with Tina and Molly, Ha, Ha, Molly, Holly, sorry, Holly, um, we went over all of the data, this week, last week as well as this week, last Tuesday, and then we came back, reviewed it again this morning, making sure that we addressed all of your concerns to that point, so, just so you know that we've been, uh.
So right now, it is the 6th.
We may also have some info from the fishing game, so there are things that will happen between now and the 25th.
September 6th?
Yeah, but I think, I'd rather give them more time and have more information for us than having them come on the 6th, when our first hearing isn't until the 20th.
We just want to make sure for your public thing, is there more you want to see in it, or do you need more time to craft that?
No, I, this was fantastic, I don't see any gaping hole in any of this, so I would just say, within what we've seen, anything else that you come upon that adds to it.
This doesn't mean it's the last public hearing.
No, no.
We have our public hearings, they present all the new and relevant, and you, you're obviously going to be at the hearing, and so you, we're going, you're going to have a takeaway, and you're going to say, we need to do this, this, and this for the next one, we're not done yet, remember, we have October, November, before the final decisions are made by December 1st, right? So I think you have plenty of time to come back, but let's go forward with what we have for the 25th, adding all of the pieces that they're about to hear from, and then you can give us feedback after that one, all right?
Thank you.
And, well, and also to add on that, at each of our monthly board meetings, there's a public comment period for folks to come and talk to us, make a minute here.
Oh, and additionally, on the 16th, Concord Green Space is hosting a community listening session at the Community Center, um, I don't have, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you the time of it, but, thank you, very much.
Which community center?
The, the Community Center on the Heights, next, at Keach Park, um, I highly recommend folks come to that too, the more we can be in a community and have these conversations, the better off we are, um, I'm planning on being there if I don't wind up with COVID, cross your fingers, that doesn't happen, um, so, yeah.
All right, awesome.
Great, um, so can I have a motion for a non-public session? Under 91A3, section two, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Higgins, all in favor? Oh, wait, roll call.
Mr. Weinberg.
Hi.
Ms. Higgins.
Hi.
Mr. Crotto.
Hi.
Mr. Cotton. Ms. Walsh.
Hi.
Ms. Meeker?
Yeah.
Mrs. Robinson, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thanks to you. So, yes.
All in favor, um, for those watching on television, we will not be coming back except to end the meeting after the non-public session.
Thank you.
And let's take a two-minute break to let people clear out.